Not yet? Good afternoon, thanks everyone for showing up today. Somebody left their hat here yesterday, I think. I'll start off with a couple of announcements and then I'll really get to it because I think this is gonna be our last meeting here. If this is our last meeting here, it's probably gonna be our last meeting on this topic. But the Meowak Sugar Pine Fire Station will continue to have a sandwich board out in front. The incident will combine and put stuff on it as long as they're still around and we'll continue to put information on it and we'll have the station open before you come in and ask questions and look around. So that's probably where that's gonna go. A couple of announcements. The fire department auxiliary, the Meowak Sugar Pine Fire Department Auxiliary has a spaghetti feed Saturday night. That spaghetti feed is still on. It follows immediately after the Chief Fuller Days. Chief Fuller Days will be here in Meowak Village from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Sort of a craft spare on the side of the highway with Mike, the kettle corn guy, he's gonna be there with his kettle corn. And that starts at 10:00, ends at 4:00, and the spaghetti feed begins at 4:00 and goes till 7:00. And the auxiliary is also selling t-shirts. So if you want to support the fire department and you're looking for one way to do it, that's one way to do it. They're for sale at the fire station, at the Meowak Sugar Pine Fire Station. We had an injury on the fire today. It was a heart-related or difficulty breathing-related injury of some kind. It was, so it was not an accident from something falling or it was a medical emergency. It was not a firefighter, not a paid firefighter from a fire department, but it was a contractor who was working at the Long Barn Refill Mixing Station, Long Barn Mixing Station. So that was that. And then I want to talk a little bit about your fire department. The Meowak Sugar Pine Fire Department is a really small fire department. I know you see a lot of fire engines here recently, but what we have are a limited number of fire engines. The newest one we have in the fleet is a 19, is 26-years-old and it's a good engine, but it's old. The one we drive primarily because of the number of type of calls we go on is a newer engine, but it's not ours. We lease it from the county. So we're a small fire department with a small budget, but we do a lot of things. And one of the things that you've seen us do recently is facilitate and help out and be around your community and your streets and your homes in the last week and a half or so. I'd like to introduce the firefighters who are here today. Would you guys please stand up? This is Captain Drew Collier. And Firefighter Jacob Kettner. And we can always use more volunteers and reserves. I really want to thank them. I really appreciate the hard work they put in. Even though Captain Collier lives right here in Toolumi County and firefighter Kettner lives in Modesto, neither one of them have been home since this thing started. They've been here working for you, working in your community, and I really appreciate that. I can tell you how much. So they've put a lot of hard work and a lot of dedication into it. They've been making maps, handing out maps to strike teams. They've been showing strike teams where access roads are and where streets are and just, it's just one thing after another. They've been helping with all the additional resources that are coming in. In addition to running the day-to-day things and sweeping the floors and cleaning the station and going on the medical emergencies that they do every day anyway. So really hats off to you guys. You know, without them, we wouldn't have the community we have. I'm going to, at this time, ask, I want to say Terry every time I say that.
Steve.
Steve, Steve Till will come up then. We don't have, he's the representative from the incident management team. He's a public information officer. You know, I'm gonna ask him to give us a little bit of an update on the fire status as of today and this morning.
Should I just...
You're probably up on the mic then.
No, actually, no, I'll talk on the mic. First thing I'd like to do is a commercial. Every place we go, every fire we go to, people always ask us, "What can we do for you? What can we do for you?" Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Anyway, every place we go, people say, "What can we do for you? We want to feed you. We want to do all these kinds of things for you." We really appreciate that, really, really we do. And I'm speaking for the kids out there that are the boots on the ground. But the best thing you can do, like the chief said, support your local volunteer fire department. Those folks are ass, raw herbs. Anyway, end of the commercial. Today, can you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You can see, your map's a little bit different. Anyway, Division Delta down here, which is the area that, of course, we're all mostly concerned about, that's all got a hard line on it. It's, they're mobbing and patrolling. One thing at this point in the fire we have to look out for carefully is spots, you know, little ember will jump across and then off we go again. But all through this Division D, all up through here, Division E, they're gonna do a little bit of burnout there. Probably haven't contained, or that part of it fixed by this time of day. One little factoid, I guess they told us today, the drone found a little spot fire out in here above its paper cabin ridge that we wouldn't have caught if it hadn't found for us. So it's, it was worth its money. On up here through Division Foxtrot, that's a solid Dozer line. Anyway, Division Foxtrot, that's a solid Dozer line up through there. What they're doing, this fire is active. As the sun comes out and heats it up, it, immersion breaks, it becomes a little more active, so you may see some smoke and columns out of it. It's not threatening anything right now and what they're doing is looking around, trying to find some places where maybe they can not fire this whole thing. If the fire calls their hand and makes a run, then we'll burn from this into the fire, which is literally the most, the safest and most effective way to do it. This area up in here, they're patrolling as well. They're also looking for some areas a little closer to the fire front. This, let's see, Lima, they're looking for spots and patrolling up in there. These areas up in here, they're not doing a whole lot because they're really not threatening, you know, the main focus is the cities and the towns along down through here. The areas in the park, which is not on this map, they are getting some spotting, it's jumping ahead, but it's in the park, it's not threatening anything down here. Bottom line is, we're looking pretty good overall, but we still have to pay attention, we have to be vigilant, because as I say, one little spark that jumps out and we're off to the races again. Finally, thank you all for your patience and support. We really appreciate it.
I've said his name three times. If I say it four times, I'll remember it. Also, for you, just so that you'll know, right now, there's, the Public Information Office of the Incident tells me that they plan to have people at a table at Chief Fuller Days tomorrow. That could change depending on whether or not they have enough staff to do it, but as of right now, they plan to have an information table there at Chief Fuller Days. So if you have any more questions, want to talk about it, there should be somebody there and it will probably, they will have handouts. If there's nobody, if they can't show up, then we will make sure that there's some handouts there anyway, because we've got some from here that we can, the fire station that we can take there. You will see more smoke. You mentioned smoke briefly. You will see more smoke, will probably experience more smoke over the next few days. Don't get excited, just stay aware. You're gonna see more smoke and you're gonna see, if you walk, if you drive down to Sonora today and drive back up, you'll see big columns of smoke coming up. Most of them are coming up from the south end of the fire, which is down in the Groveland area and the Yosemite area. So you're gonna see that. So don't, don't get excited, but do stay aware, okay? I would like to ask Scott if you've come up here. Scott and I have been the only players in this thing that have been here since day one, so.
Well, we got some good news today. We released Toolumi City off evacuation order. So, good news for those of you. Yeah, we are still under evacuation advisory coming up north Toolumi Road and we hold on to communities sometimes a little longer, okay? We could probably release Pondrosa Hills fire-wise. The sheriff wants to be very, very careful in there because it's such a limited one-way in, one-way-out type thing. And the worst thing we can do is put, put people back in and then have to remove them again. So that's where we're at there. And I think you'll see in the next hour or two that Soulzerville and Will Springs will be released from their evacuation advisory. Sheriff's just called me on that. We're getting that here now. And as things progress, as things get better, you may see some evacuation advisories lifted, but please, even if the evacuation advisory is lifted, be vigilant, still be prepared. You never know. You know, we may have to do this again. I hope we don't. I'm also getting pretty tired, but please be vigilant and listen to your radios, Comcast Channel 8. If you have a reputable Facebook or web page or whatever you go to, just be vigilant, be ready. Just because of the evacuation advisory is lifted does not mean that the fire danger's over. It just means we're dropping down a level, okay? And last, I won't keep you forever, but I really want to thank you. I've got nothing but positive comments out of this meeting. I've met some great people, some, made some great friends, and you truly do have a wonderful community and I appreciate it. The sheriff's often appreciates that. So thank you.
And since he carries a gun and writes tickets, I hope never to see him again. I would like to acknowledge CAL FIRE for all their hard work and dedication here also and representing CAL FIRE today. Standing in the back, he said that he wouldn't come up here unless I had Scott Hagg on to come and come up here. It's Andy Murphy Battalion Chief. He was in the man's center for years. He now is a field battalion for CAL FIRE and he's been covering this battalion since the start of the fire. Meaning he's been covering this battalion where we are physically for other calls and new calls that come in, while the rest of the folks are over there fighting the fire. Somebody's gotta watch out for the new calls and the new fires, the new emergencies. And that's what Andy's been doing since the start of this thing. I also want to recognize Mary Stock. Mary's a battalion chief from San Bernardino County. Stand up, Mary. Mary's leading a strike team of engines that are covering fire stations in the Toolumi Calaveras unit, okay? All the way from San Bernardino County and they, evidently they know where Meowak is because they found us today. I have a story to tell about Mary. I haven't told any stories or jokes yet today and I was not going to. But... You don't have the mic. Mary and I were in the bargaining team together for the CDF firefighter some years back and she was having some problems. I talked a little bit about her medical, she was having problems with headaches. They couldn't figure out what was causing the headaches. So one week, we're in bargaining, she says, "Well, I'm gonna get a CAT scan next week." And so she goes away, she comes back the next week to bargaining and we are all like, "Well, Mary, what happened?" And she said, "Well, they did a CAT scan of my head and they couldn't find anything." Am I right? It's now time for Fred, the district ranger for the Meowak District of the United States Forest Service.
Thanks. Yeah, you know, I am the acting district ranger here for probably another couple of months and, you know, as an acting ranger, you know, we, you know, I found a place in Long Barn, a rent house. You know, normally I'm really good at turning in my rent because I, you know, I'm very, I do it a week ahead of time prior to the rent due. However, this month was a little bit different because I wasn't really sure what's gonna be there, you know, the next few days. But, you know, I have inside information, so today I was comfortable enough to pay the rent for next month, so. However, as I were to reiterate what Scott said, things can change, you know? So I could cancel my check. I have a few more days to do that, so. Just to give you an idea of that, you know, I, based on, you know, what the fire management officials are telling me from the Forest Service, I think we're looking good. And I wanted to, also for Steve, I wanted to kind of touch on something. He said, you know, this question came up a few days ago, "What can we do for, to show our appreciation for firefighters in our, you know, that are coming up here?" And I have another response to that too. I think the best thing you folks can do is to follow the recommendations for the defensible firewise space area for your homes, because, you know, that makes their job a lot more easier if you, you know, clear vegetation away from your homes and make it, you know, very firewise. So that's, that's my recommendation. I just talked to my fire management officer today just before I got here and he was telling me that, you know, even though this is kind of, you know, starting to kind of wind down up here in the north, they are still embedded in the, and they're still making recommendations for the team. And one of those recommendations, I know, you know, this is kind of in the planning stages, but, you know, they're planning to do, potentially do prescribed burns and they're creating Dozer lines a little bit further away from where we are now to try to reduce the amount of impact that is gonna be burned. And he went in there and he said, "Listen, at Lee Price Camp, you know, there's some cabins over there and there's also near the whole meadow." So that's where they said, "Okay, well, we're gonna put the line south of there." And so that's where our, you know, that's where our, that's the way our local folks from the Forest Service play a role in this team. It's just, I want to reemphasize that. And, you know, Scott and Larry are coming here every day telling these stories. I'm starting to run out of stories here because I just know little bits here and there, but, you know, I thought one of the more interesting things about, you know, these fire operations is the fire camp. And, you know, Evan kind of told you a little bit about it, but, you know, there's a lot more actually going on than what Evan was saying. There's, you know, there's two camps right now. There's one camp down in Toolumi City and there's another camp in Drew Meadows near Groveland. And these are like mini cities. In fact, I was told that not right now with the buildup in Drew Meadows and near Groveland, it's, you can see it from the satellite, the lights and stuff like that. So it's a pretty big camp. And it's really totally self-contained. Normally for a type one team, they come kind of standardized. They have trailers. It has about 10 mobile, what are called camp in a box. But basically a trailer with desks and chairs where they can operate in there. There, they have generators, so there's air conditioning. For the other camps outside, there are kind of like these group tents with air conditioning as well. So, you know, sometimes the smoke kind of gets pretty nasty out there, so you need kind of confined spaces. They have operations for photocopying because each day they photocopy the incident action plan for all the firefighters and division supervisors. And of course, they have the showers. Actually, there's portable showers, but everything needs to be brought in, the water needs to be brought in, the gray water needs to be brought out. So there needs to be logistical support as far as where dumping, you know, the water is and that sort of stuff. And, you know, usually if you have to feed a crew of, you know, over, you know, 1,000 firefighters, they probably need to do it, well, the camp, the last time I camped, I saw it up at power and also here at Camp Drew, they had about six rigs, six, you know, large trucks. And it's incredible how the operation that they do over there as far as like cooking wise. I remember just a few nights ago, there was, they had a primary before dinner, but, you know, it's kind of overcooked, but. But it was incredible. The way they were operating, it's just a whole line of firefighters just going around and they were just, you know, doling out the food, you know, non-stop and the line never stopped. And, you know, these firefighters worked really, really hard, so as part of the contract, we, the team requires them to have a certain number of calories per meal. And I don't know exactly what the calories is. I think it's really high up there, but I remember one time they were serving like, it was barbecue ribs and literally it was like, almost like half the calories on the dish. It seemed like, who could possibly eat that much? And so for the office jockeys like me, you know, we can't take that many calories, so we, you know, we'll get overweight. But, so we just said, "Please, half the, you know, half the plate and that's, that does fine." Whereas the real guys who do the real work on the ground, you know, they eat that up pretty quick. So, but yeah, so it's a really complex operation and it requires a lot of coordination on it, effort and it's actually copied, you know, around the world. You know, the people from the Forest Service are invited to other countries to talk about the incident command system and how we organize things and how we operate these teams and how we involve the local community. So it's a world-class organization. So just to tell you, you know, you guys are a part of that and this country is part of that and you guys should be proud of that too. So that's all I have.
They did it again. They gave me more time to think in right now. It is, it is a world-class organization and it's an inter-agency team. It's not just Forest Service. It's, they're members from a whole raft of, as a matter, some of them, as a matter of fact, some of them are retired people that come back and still help out. I asked the PIO last night, John, I forget his last name, who's the PIO for the team. I said, "What was your last activation? What was your last major incident that they managed?" The last incident they were on was Hurricane Sandy in New York and they were stationed in New York. So they get around, they get around a lot. I want to mention a couple, one thing that I've mentioned, I think, almost every single day here, and that is that I am so proud to be part of what I call a community of neighbors. This is a community of neighbors. When we started these meetings seven days ago, it was pretty grim. There were not many smiles on the faces out there. There were a lot of people that were not sleeping at night. And today, we're telling jokes. So we've come a long ways. We're gonna finish with these meetings, but don't forget, you're still a community of neighbors. We're still gonna be here, you're still gonna be here. Don't just walk away from here and let life go on the way it is. Let's, let's stay in touch, let's, let's keep things going in a positive fashion, a positive direction. And I want to put in one more plug for the VIP and then we'll do questions and answers if you have any questions. And we'll do the same way we did for the last seven days. The VIP program we're putting together, Meowak Sugar Pine, is not gonna be a fire department's thing, it's a CDF-sponsored program. We're gonna leverage their program for volunteers in prevention, which is what VIP stands for, volunteers in prevention. We're gonna leverage their pre-existing program to get volunteers who want to go out into our community, our members, our community of neighbors that want to go out into our community and do pre-fire inspections for defensible space. Well, you get trained, you'll get experience with somebody who's done it before and then you can go out as part of a team or part of a small crew and do the inspections around people's homes and advise your neighbors, keep them informed on what they need to do to be defensible in case of a fire. We don't have to do the enforcement. If your neighbors don't comply, then we turn it over to CAL FIRE and they can put the black hat on and go do the enforcement part of it. So we do the outreach part, we do the initial inspection and we can leverage that to stay in touch with our neighbors and to encourage our neighbors to continue to and to improve the defensible spaces around their homes. So there's my plug for the VIP program. We're just trying to start it, it's in its inception. I've got applications at the fire station, so feel free to stop by and pick one up. And I guess with that, we can open it for questions and answers, if we have any, okay? If you have a question, you can raise your hand and you'll get a microphone. And if you have a microphone, you can ask a question.
Thank you very much. I'm Joseph De Colapo. I reside over in Sherwood Forest. I got a two-part question. One, I noticed a checkpoint has gone away over on Toolumi Roads. That's probably for the sheriff. Over on Toolumi Road and east. So I don't know, is that mean, you know, is things have changed in our favor or we're just short of staff? The second question is, we're there on Division Foxtrot. I noticed that's the last set up, the section that's directly in line probably with Twain Heart. I was down last night and all the other prior nights, there've been several firefighters in the area, you know, from San Bruno and all that, from where I originally are from. I noticed tonight, there's nobody there, or hardly anybody there. I'm not gonna accuse there's nobody there because I haven't seen anybody. So I just want to know, is the resources being pulled back because things are getting better or is it that money is getting tight? I just basically want to know why the pullback and less fire engines in the neighborhood. Thank you.
That's a very good question. Thank you. Resources, you'll see, resources diverted and in fact, some of them are being released from the fire because the fire, the threat is changing. The threat is changing, I think is probably the best way to say it. Three days ago, down here in Division Delta and Charlie, right below it, well, Charlie's up here now, but it was down here. This section, the fire itself was right here and it was uncontrolled. We had a control line here to Division Echo and we had a control line from this anchor point, or from this point down into Division Charlie Beta and Alpha, Bravo and Alpha. That, that section of open red line, was red on the map, means it was open line. That section was causing us a lot of grief, those of us who are familiar with fires and have worked around it, because remember the prevailing wind on this fire was a southwest wind, from the southwest to the northeast, from the southwest to the northeast. So it wanted to push the fire that direction. The prevailing terrain wants to push the fire almost due north and if it slops over, if it slops over the North Fork of the Toolumi and Grange here, then it would naturally run almost northeast instead of south, it would run northwest instead of northeast. So that's all. So our concern was this section right here, if they couldn't contain that and it slopped over, that this little red piece of line would turn into a great big piece of fire right here and run up into Toolumi City and head towards Meowak. Okay, that was our concern. That piece of line was closed off and has been held and controlled and patrolled for 48 hours. So the threat of a fire coming from any place down here and running up into Toolumi, into Toolumi, Twain Heart and Meowak is negligible, almost nonexistent at this point in time. I don't want to say nonexistent because then surely something will happen. But the threat to our communities from this fire is dramatically reduced to the point where I'm sleeping at night. The threat to the other communities, what's going on now is with all this black line, not much of a threat here, but this fire is still open. If it progresses up and if it can't be controlled here, if it slops over these lines, then the threat is gonna be to the Long Barn Pine Crest area. So they've been shifting resources up, been shifting structure protection resources to Long Barn and Pine Crest. This firefight in here is not gonna be done with cities from, with engines from San Bruno like you're talking about. It's gonna be done with the brush engines that you see, the four-wheel drive, and we call them type threes. It's the engines that can get out on the dirt roads and get around better on dirt roads than the urban and city type engines that you see in our community. What you see in our community is what we call type ones. Those are designed for city streets, paved roads, hydrated areas and structure fires, single-family dwellings, commercial structures, high-rises and so forth. Those engines don't do well out in this country. They do really well for structure protection, that's why they've been here. But now, the firefight is gonna shift to an area where they're gonna need more type threes. And so what you've seen, if you've noticed, you've seen some type threes, two or three strike teams going up the hill since 6 o'clock this morning. They're headed up the Long Barn, they're going out that 301 road and they're gonna work this line here. But since the threat to us has been diminished, they are in fact sending some of those engines home because they don't need them, because there's no longer the significant threat to our community in the way of structures. Does that make sense? I don't want to say that the threat is over, okay? Stay vigilant, but the threat is dramatically reduced. Scott, did you want to say something about his question on the evacuation of the road closures?
Yeah, it's just simple. We have the same amount of people. In fact, sheriff, we had the option to send us some people earlier and the sheriff's holding onto it for another 24 hours until tomorrow night at 6:00. But as you have less fire traffic, you have less need for that road to be closed, so it's just easier to open it up, but you are still under that advisory.
Yes, my question isn't so much about this fire right now, but you were talking about the VIP. Is there anything in progress perhaps to say that people who have vacant lots should clean their lots to protect their neighbors?
You want a one-word answer? No. There is, there is nothing in the current law, as I know, that I know of, that permits CAL FIRE or any other agency to enforce a we-dabayment program in this, in our community. The county has no we-dabayment program countywide, is that correct? So, there's no weed abatement program for vacant lots in this area. It's only around structures. The 4291 statutes only apply to structures and the clearance around structures.
Can you identify the divisions? I mean, that doesn't mean much to me. I can see, you know, where MEWOC is. But Division J, Division K, can you identify those accordance to residential areas such as where Sierra Village, where Sierra Park?
Sure. This is MEWOC Village, right here.
Got that.
Okay? Twain Heart. Long Barn's right there. And Sierra Village is between, right there.
Division H.
Division H, yeah, hotel.
Thank you.
The fire that we have here right now is called Rim Fire. Let me get that title. I am surprised it took this long for somebody to ask that question. Every fire and usually every incident, every major incident is identified with a hopefully unique identifier for radio traffic, for media, for fire reports, for record-keeping purposes. So that, as, when you have an initial attack fire, you get resources coming from all over the place. And you might have two or three fires going at the same time on the same radio frequency. And in order to make sure that this operation section is talking to the correct incident commander, they will designate that Rim Fire. And the next one might be 108 Fire, if it's on Highway 108. Or the next one might be Groveland or some sort of an identifier. And the identifiers are usually picked, they're PFA, plucked from air. Not 100% true. They actually are usually related to some sort of a geographical feature or landmark near where the fire is reported or starts. In this case, the fire started on Jockbone Ridge, I think. The incident commander the next morning was at Rim of the World where he set up his incident command. So, he just started calling some Rim Fire because it was at the Rim of the World or near the Rim of the World.
Okay, like that complex fire in 87.
And the name of that fire was actually the Stanislas Complex. That was the name of the fire. Stanislas Complex. And it was called the complex because it started out as more than one fire.
Hi. I was wondering if you can answer to this three-day weekend, if there's going to be an advisory for tourists coming into the area to not come into the area. So, we can leave if we need to without hitting a lot of traffic.
Legally, we can't keep people out of an advisory area unless we've done a road closure. We have been in touch with Pinecrest. We have been in touch with the Doctorage folks because they have an event going. So, that's been greatly reduced. But I think your, I can't say for sure, but I think your advisory may develop into a lower level in the next day or two.
Hi there. This is my first meeting. Sounds like it might be my last. So, forgive me if I ask some questions we didn't want to address before, but if I'm looking at Division Foxtrot here and the dozer line that you have kind of adjacent to MEWOC, can you tell me where that is in relation to, what is it, Mount Lewis and what was it, Duck?
Duck Wall.
Duck Wall?
Yeah.
Yes, I can. This is Duck Wall Mountain right there. Okay? I don't know where Mount Lewis is. I can look on the map and find it, but that's the Duck Wall. This is Paper Cabin Ridge. Is that a landmark you recognize?
Well, I just know because my cabin looks out of Mount Lewis.
Okay, where is Mount Lewis? We'll find it on the map here somewhere. You can come up afterwards. By the way, we will hang around after the question and answer period. My boss once said, "The last guy standing is the winner." So, I'll be here. Right opposite Twain Heart is Mount Lewis. There it is, right there. That's Mount Lewis. Okay, so since you weren't here, I'll explain just a little bit. You guys will bear with me for a second. The black line, well, first of all, let me start with another one. See if I can find... Let's see. I can't find any. Proposed lines, proposed dozer lines are dotted lines with X's interspersed every third or fourth dot. As they complete the dozer line, they just X it out and it turns into an X, a hash, a series of hashes like that. That's a dozer line that's been constructed physically on the ground. The red line is the best estimate, given all the intelligence of where the fire is burning, the fire's edge, the edge of the fire. Everything inside here is burning, has burned, or it might burn. The black line is line where they have put a, we have a physical or a geographical control line in place and the fire is controlled at that location along that line. So, that's what those are. These little parentheses divide Division Echo from Division Delta. Division Foxtrot goes from here up to, what comes after Foxtrot? Division K. At least that's the way this one's divided. The other question that often comes up is branches. The fires, for operational purposes, is managed by Operation Section Chief, who's supervised and managed by the incident commander. The Operation Section Chief manages one or more branches and their branch supervisors who manage one or more sections or divisions, or divisions or groups, or their, and their supervisors who manage one or more individual, single increments of fire engines or field observers, or strike teams of engines and the strike team leaders. And then the strike team leaders manage five fire engines or two hand crews. And each engine company officer manages those folks on his engine. So, this breakdown that you see of branches, divisions, strike teams and operations is nothing about priorities. It's strictly about the ability to maintain a span of control on every increasing or now decreasing incident, decreasing in size. A lot more than you wanted to know. I know that, so.
I don't have a question. What I have is a deep gratitude for you and the entire team that have given us this information for all week. Thank you.
I wouldn't be able to give you this information if it weren't shared by the folks, you know, I go to the briefings and they share the information with me. I get the phone calls with the information. And I really appreciate the sharing of information from the CAL FIRE folks, from the sheriff's office, from the Forest Service, the incident management team and the support that we're getting because I wouldn't have that information to share with you if they didn't give it to me and if they didn't come up here and show their support. So, I appreciate their support also. Let's do two more questions and then we'll shut the meeting down. We'll hang around for questions up here. Mary?
Yes, we were lucky enough to have the fire crew come into the canyon right below us and they cleaned out really nicely. But my neighbor, who isn't here today, they left a lot of debris nicely piled. But are we responsible for getting rid of that or how is that going to be taken care of?
I wouldn't do anything with it now. Okay, just leave it there. There will, a rehab team will come through and assess what needs to be done. If dozer piles, if there's dozer piles there and they need to be smoothed out, the rehab team will take care of it. If there, I do know that they're cutting brush and piling brush. And I know because I was informed, I was told to tell you this yesterday and I forgot. And what Mary's talking about, for those of you that don't know, is there's what we call a shaded fuel break that runs all the way from Long Barn up here. Actually, that's what this dozer line is. There's a shaded fuel break that runs all the way down to Coffel Road now, underneath our community. The shaded fuel break is where they come in and they take out all the underbrush and they lim all the trees up 20 or 30 feet. So, that instead of this growth, this terrible growth of undergrowth that you see, there's, you can see through the trees. And it's easier and faster to come in in case like now and put a whole dozer line in. With this one, they were able to punch a dozer line from Long Barn all the way down almost to Coffel Road in one night shift. If they hadn't prepped it ahead of time, it would have taken probably three full days to accomplish that same task. And they would have then had all that brush that they cut and piled up there to go, to do something with. This time, since we've got that shaded fuel break that your folks and your managers put in over the last years, there's not nearly as much brush that's piled up. But the brush piles that are piled up, the plan is to leave them there and they will come in this fall and actually burn those and get them out of the way and get rid of that hazard this fall. But they're not going to do it, they're not going to burn it right now.
Maybe this was answered already, but best answer about when the advisement will be lifted at this time? Maybe that's the sheriff?
I can't say for sure. The sheriff wants to give it one more night and get that crew in there. Most decisions are made after the morning planning meeting. So, we should know something more definitive probably mid-morning lunchtime tomorrow, I think. And if it's not lifted then, it may go to Saturday. But I have a feeling, I can't say for sure, but I have a feeling a decision will be made on that tomorrow.
Okay, one last thing, since this is the last meeting. In case you didn't know, because you all have been coming to this meeting for so long now as a community of neighbors, I am now the newsmaker of the day on KVML.
Zoe's coffee house next door is open if anybody's interested.